Wonderful. Thank you, Doug. The February tenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting for the city of Newburgh, Oregon is now called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Okay, we have Chris Wright.
Here.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Charles Aben.
Here.
Connor Hanson.
Present.
Jessica Harrington.
Here.
Aiden Gray.
Here.
And Jeffrey Musall is absent. He's excused.
Always a reminder for everyone that Aiden is now a full voting member, so don't want to forget that. And Jessica, I apologize, I'm still trying to get used to all of the names, so next time we will get you promoted earlier.
Wonderful. Great, at this time, I would like to open public records for any comments not on tonight's agenda.
So this is one for Steve to see if he wants to make any comments.
Okay, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. First of all, hello to my son-in-law, Mr. Charles Abon. But just wanted to say hello to everybody here. I've been a resident. My name is Steve Guest. I've been a resident here in Newburgh for a little over six years. And bought in a couple of properties and set up my daughters up here and stuff. And it's not comments, just questions, I guess. You know, I don't know where to start. But I just had a question of what is our goal here? Because I've seen over the last six years that investors have moved in, bought property and tried to stick homes wherever they can possibly stick homes to turn a profit. And then leave the residents with the wreck afterwards. Like one of the houses on Winooski, you know, they built all those little shotgun homes there. And now every car flies down that street at fifty miles an hour. And, you know, my daughter can't even back out of her driveway without people blaring the horn and stuff like that at her. And, you know, I just wondered what our mission is here. Are we going to keep the charm of Newburgh? Or are we just trying to stick a home wherever possible and letting these investors make a lot of money and run? So that's all I had to say tonight. And again, it wasn't a comment, just more of a question. So we know what to do from there. And I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments or anybody in the waiting room?
Well, I think, Madam Chair, is that there was kind of a question in Steve's comments to the commissioners. And I guess I would push that back to the commissioners if they want to make any response to that, or staff can respond.
Well, I can do one response. According to House Bill that was recently passed, what we're trying to do is, according to emergency bylaws from the House, we have to allow option of different types of residences. And we cannot actually block people from coming in and buying properties and doing things like that. Doug, can you go ahead and further comment on that? Any of the other commissioners first have any comments on that? Can staff comment, please?
Sure, I will. So we have a variety of things that are going on, Steve. So the council has a list of goals. You can check that out on the city's website under the council page. And so, you know, affordable housing is one of those particular goals. We have another one on urban renewal program, diversity, equity, and inclusion, sustainability. And so we follow, we flow under that particular umbrella. The community also did a community visioning program that was completed in August of twenty nineteen, which sets the stage for what the community wants to be over the next twenty years. Basically, it's establishing their desires rather than being reactive, is being proactive of what they want their community to look like. And part of that is embedded with, you know, trying to keep that small-town feel. At the same time, we have the state through the legislature, which gets pushed for our particular department, Community Development, to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And so as the chair had just mentioned, there was a bill passed in twenty nineteen that was called House Bill two thousand and one. And House Bill two thousand and one essentially says that wherever you allow, your zoning allows a detached single-family home. And if you're a community over twenty-five thousand, you will also allow duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and cottage clusters. So the city received a grant. We went through the process. We adopted the duplex regulations back in June of twenty twenty-one. And then the council adopted the triplex, quadplex, cottage clusters, and townhome regulations in December of twenty twenty-one. So we are fully in compliance now with the new state law that's in place. So with that, then, we are also trying to address our issue about having a vibrant and stable economy. So we've done a housing, I should say, we did an economic opportunities analysis, which was accepted by council back in twenty twenty-one. We also did a housing needs analysis, which identifies with our growing population of what we need for additional land supplied in order to accommodate that population over the course of the next twenty years. That number essentially says that we're going to need around seventy-five to eighty acres of additional land outside of our existing urban growth boundary. For our employment side, we need about one hundred and fifty-six acres of land for employment opportunities. We are also actively working on redeveloping the mill site. And Planning Commission has heard about that. And so the old mill is coming down, and that will get redeveloped into industrial, primarily on the area that's located to the east of River Street. Then the mill site has some other land that will get developed as high-density housing and mixed commercial. And then there's some other lands. The urban renewal, we're looking at a way to fund infrastructure for new commercial development downtown, the industrial development out at the mill site, that higher density and median density land down in the riverfront area. And so the Urban Renewal Agency, last Monday, approved a resolution that's forwarding that proposal to the taxing districts, which that information went out to them today. And that will come back in front of the city council back in April. So there's a lot of moving pieces. Our Public Works Department, we've updated all of our, what we call our functional plans, transportation, sewer water, and storm plans over the last four, five years or so. So that again is addressing the growing population that will occur. And all of those plans have to follow certain statewide regulations through administrative rules. So think of it as kind of, there's a lot of top-down. We're told what we have to do. And then we have to turn around and modify our local regulations in order to comply with all of that. So you mentioned the Winooski site, and so that was the old, was a school, then it was a church, then it was a school. Then it was vacant, and a developer did come in and buy that land, and they do do what we're kind of call our skinny homes. They're on three thousand square foot lots, single-car garages, two, three-bedroom units and so forth. So that's considered an infill project. And yes, Winooski, eventually, there will be no parking on Winooski. It's a collector's roadway, which would not allow parking to occur. There will be bike lanes and so forth on that roadway when it gets fully improved. And of course, it takes a number of years for that improvement to occur from basically River Street all the way down to Eleventh Street. So that's just a little bit of flavor, Steve, of kind of where we're going, what the commission has been dealing with over the course of the last seven years, almost seven years.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, very good. Well, I recognize that, you know, the key word is you guys accepted a grant, or maybe the board did before, and you guys have to live within that grant. I do understand that. And you're going to do the best job you guys possibly can to honor that and, you know, keep everything right with the residents and stuff here. I guess the issue on Winooski is everybody flies up and down that street, and it probably needs speed bumps or something now, just to slow down the cars a little bit so people can get in and out of their driveways without people jamming up and down there. And, you know, I guess my question is, you know, yeah, you have to live with that. People are going to come in, they're going to stick a house in anywhere. But is there any rules or regulations where you guys can dictate to people that, hey, look, you got to put a driveway here or there? Like currently, I live on South Meridian. It's a small street. And the house across the street sold. I know the person is going to try to split the lot, and I get it. That's why he bought it, so he can make a lot of money. But, you know, my truck has been hit three times up and down that street because the street's not wide to begin with. And now putting two homes across the street instead of one, you know, with the average vehicles of three vehicles to a property, you're going to put six vehicles on that, on that street to park. And I have a single-loaded driveway. Yes, I can park all three, four vehicles in the driveway, but I got to back them all out singly to get out and go. And if you put a car right across the street, it's almost impossible to even back out of the street. Is there any rules and regulations where you can tell that borrower or that developer, hey, look, build a driveway adjacent to the other driveway so people can actually back out and not have a car parked there?
I guess that's what I'm looking for. I want to work with that.
Buddy, you know, I don't want to deny somebody of making money or the community growing and stuff like that, but is there any happy medium that residents have? That's all.
There are a couple of things that happen. So there are land use regulations about access to each property and driveways in the position and location of those particular driveways. The other piece is our Traffic Safety Commission. That is staffed out of our Public Works Department. So Steve, if you wanted to go on to the website, and my email address is on the Community Development page. If you wanted to email me, I can connect you with our Public Works Department, our Engineering Division, which does the staffing for the Traffic Safety Commission. And then you would have an opportunity to talk with them about the issues on Winooski, about speeding and so forth. But I think that's probably the appropriate way to respond to your inquiries tonight, so we can get you more information.
Okay, that's fantastic. I mean, I've actually did the footwork and talked to the officers who patrol that road. And they do indicate that a lot of cars come flying, but a lot of cars look like they're going faster than what they're doing. But they still think that it is a little bit unsafe. So they suggest that I actually went on to a meeting and start bringing that to everybody's attention because obviously they're just doing what they've been told, you know, they've been told. And again, please don't take this as, hey, someone's complaining. I'm not. I want to be happy with everybody, and I want the builder across the street to make money and sell that home. I mean, we have a great community. Everybody's housing is going up and stuff like that. I just want to make it a happy medium, so it's easy for everybody. And, you know, again, if you put six to eight more cars on the street here, it's going to be impossible to park and pull out of the driveway and stuff like that. God forbid, you have to get an emergency vehicle through. You know, it's only single lane. So that's all I was looking for, is any direction to, if that's in consideration, before we just hand out, hey, we took grant, we have to allow these other properties. That's all.
Yeah, it's one of those situations where we have the older parts of Newburgh North and South of downtown, which have narrower streets but wide rightaways, and the roads are not fully built out to our current standards. Where you get to that situation on South Meridian, where you've got a narrow curb-to-curb width, but the rightaway is much bigger than that. And as we do partitions, then we do require particular improvements that be done. There's, but our engineering group has to look at each one of those as their additional rightaway dedication that needs to occur. And does there need to be some kind of street improvements that need to be done? But Steve, absolutely, just send me an email, and I will connect you with the appropriate staff.
All right, I appreciate it. And thank you for the time. I hope everybody had a terrific New Year's. And, you know, we hope everybody progresses here in twenty twenty-two. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Your comments are very important, and I appreciate your insights, this Planning Commission. At this time, we will close public testimony. Thank you, Mr. X, our community director, development director. Are there any further questions in this matter or comments? At this time? All right. Then, since we have no further comments, we will move on to the consent calendar for February's meeting. Do I have a motion regarding meeting minutes for January twenty twenty-one?
Playing Commissioner Charles Abon to approve meeting minutes for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Adrian. We have a, can I have a voice vote? All in favor to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Meeting minutes passed. Thank you. Hey, next up is new business, and we are doing our vice chair. So going along with seniority, Planning Commissioner Sharon Capri, you would be next in line for vice chair.
Are you asking me to decline?
Would you like to officially decline or accept?
Only if, I would only accept if I had some training in it, you know?
Well.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
While you're working, Commissioner Capri, while you're, we're doing things this year, kind of, that's how we treat it in the past, is watching what the chair does and kind of helping things out is kind of your training throughout the year. And so, you know, this, accepting the position of vice chair basically sets you up to be chair next year. And so you're kind of, that's kind of the way it's going. And so, and then if Chair Wright can't be there, then you step into his shoes. But I think, I think we don't have that much problem with that, since Commissioner Wright's pretty much here all the time, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So with that in mind, what do you think?
Dear.
No pressure.
I, I would say that I would rather step aside.
Okay.
No shame in that.
That's all right. Miss Sharon Capri, we all understand. All right, the next in line would then be Charles Aben. Aben. Whoa. Would you accept commission for vice chair?
I will accept commission for vice chair.
All right, thank you.
So.
A motion?
Yeah, what you need is a motion and a second, and then a vote.
We have a motion to assign or nominate position of vice chair for Charles Aben.
Madam Chair, I nominate Commissioner Abon for the position of vice chair for the year of twenty twenty-two on the Newburgh Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Dell. Do we have a second?
Second the motion?
Thank you very much. Vice chair approved for Charles Aben for twenty twenty-two Planning Commission Vice Chair. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, you still need a vote.
And can we have a voice vote? Or do we have to do a roll call vote?
You can do a voice vote.
We have a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Vice Chair for Planning Commission, Charles Aben. Granted. Thank you very much, commissioners. Okay, the next new business on the consent calendar will be staff on updates on housing production and strategy and the technical assistance grant on, well, for multi-family code updates. I'm turning it over to you, Mary and Doug.
Hello. I feel like Steve's question earlier is actually going to fit really well with this. So I'm kind of glad, actually, for the polycomics earlier. Yeah, so I'm here. I'm the housing planner for the city of Newburgh. Most of you, I think most of you have met me already. But I am here to help with, with housing issues in the city of Newburgh. So I'm going to talk about some of our grant projects that we're working on this past year or this upcoming year. We received two grants from the Department of Land Conservation for these projects. So I'll go over kind of overview. Some of you, it might be a little bit of something you've already heard of me talk about before. But for the new commissioners, this will probably be helpful as well. All right, next slide, please. All right, so we'll first talk about the housing production strategy. This project is following our housing needs analysis that Doug mentioned earlier tonight. Basically, we're trying to figure out how we're going to meet all of the housing needs that came from that housing needs analysis. So primary objective is to outline actual production of needed housing that was identified in the housing needs analysis. So we'll come up with strategies and actual goals where we can hopefully achieve those needed housing goals that we came up with back in twenty nineteen with the housing needs analysis. The Affordable Housing Commission will act as the citizen advisory committee for that project, but will come to you, like I'm doing tonight, with updates as that moves forward. So you'll be, you'll be notified on all things that are happening with this project. So again, outcomes, I won't read through all of this a lot of text, but outcomes are going to be just a better understanding of some of the socioeconomic and demographic trends in housing, market conditions, so we know how we can achieve the needed housing that we need in the city, if there's any barriers to how we are making it harder for certain types of housing to be developed here in Newburgh, especially the types of housing that we need the most. And then, you know, better understanding of vulnerable populations in the community and how we're going to achieve housing for their needs. So homelessness in the city, how we're going to provide housing for them, better understanding of people who are rent burden in the community, people who are paying too much of their income in housing, making sure that we provide housing stock that will be affordable to them. And, and then just creating a way for us to provide more affordable subsidized housing. So housing that is subsidized so that people can pay lower rents or mortgages because they just don't have the funds to pay them at-market rate housing. So that's kind of the main goal and anticipated outcomes with this project. You can go to the next slide, please. And this is kind of where we are. We're just starting this project. So we're just at kickoff right now. We've had a couple of meetings with our consultants who are Echo Northwest. They do a lot of really great housing work in the, in the area. And so we're going to be working on coming up with contextualized housing needs. What are those actual needs that we need to be strategizing for? Strategies to accommodate those future housing needs, and then a final report, and then eventual adoption. So we hope, this will be a little, about a year and a half-long process. So we're hoping to have it adopted by April of next year in twenty twenty-three. And we will have additional citizen advisory committees, meetings with the Affordable Housing Commission, and those will be public as well. So there'll be public meetings where people from the public can come, ask questions if they need to, and just kind of be able to, to see how this is all working out. But we'll also be doing outreach with the community as well, making sure that we are getting the right information from the community to help create the strategies for the, the housing production strategy report. Any questions on this particular project?
Yes, Planning Commissioner Wright, Mary. How is it determined how many of units currently are available for categories like disabled veterans, single-parent households? How is that actually determined in context of the available housing?
Well, some of it is census data, and we just have a new census that came out. So we'll be able to use some of that information that'll be actually recent. Some of it is just knowledge that we have from the Yanhaile Housing Authority, who provides subsidized housing within the area. So they'll be able to provide us with data on the type of people that are getting housing from them. And Doug, you might have some other insights as well on this.
Well, Mary's hit on the, kind of, the two pieces. The census, there's the American Community Survey. The Amhill County Housing Authority will have data and information. The Oregon Housing and Community Services will have, have data and information that's available. We have some different service organizations and so forth. We'll have different data. YCAP, potentially Love Inc., maybe Virginia Garcia. So those types of organizations that operate within the community will have information and knowledge as well. You know, commissioner, it is to get down to, you know, the specific. That's always a big challenge, you know? You've got, you've got metadata, mega-data, and trying to refine that down to, you know, a specific smaller pool of populations. I can't say we're going to have all of the answers to it, but our consultants are pretty good about gleaning data and information from different resources to help inform us about what that particular need is. We also have our, our Latino population, our BIPOC population, and what are their particular needs? We, the university, of course, they do a lot of their housing on campus, but there are those who live off-campus. So that might be another potential data source to try to mine, to understand what those particular housing needs are. The university has built several new dorms over the course of the last seven years and done some remodel to meet their overall mission for their students and providing that student life and education on campus itself. So there's a lot to it, and that's why it takes about a year and a half to go through this. There's a lot of community outreach and conversations that need to be had to understand the dynamics because we're dealing with our very low-income family households of thirty percent or less of area median income, which is, right now, a family of four is quickly approaching, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year to our sixty percent of area median income, to our eighty percent, to our workforce housing, basically between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent. And if you're above one hundred and twenty percent of AMI, then, you know, you have more market choices, I'll call it that, to be able to acquire housing. Remember, in our HNA, is that we're toggling where we were at about seventy-five percent of our housing stock that was being produced as detached, single-family homes. That number's trending down over the next twenty years to about sixty percent. And we need more of the middle housing and multifamily housing opportunities that exist because there was, there was a decade-plus, there was no multifamily housing built. We've seen some in the last seven years again with the project up off of Villa Road, the one downtown. One that's under construction now on Springbrook north of Rite Aid. There was another project for multifamily housing down on Hayes and Springbrook. And there are some other conversations with developers about some additional multifamily housing. So we're trying to provide housing at all income levels. I think that's the, one of the important messages. All income levels. And so how do we do that? And then structure a program such that we're producing the units that meet that particular need for all of those income levels?
Wonderful. Wonderful. Well, thank you, Doug, very much. I do appreciate a heads up on all those resources. So I can kind of look at them before we have to convene as of a as also the Affordable Housing Commission be in on that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. No further questions for me.
Any other questions?
Chair, I have a comment, I guess. Doug, I'm just kind of listening to our the gentleman we had here before. Sorry, my name is blank and I'm easy. Steven, was it? Yes, anyway, I think the and this is kind of a concern that I think a few people have brought up when they get up here to try to talk to us. And so as a commission, we tend to think of things in a quantitative measure. It's like, okay, how much housing do we have? How much land do we have? Do we have enough land for employment? Do we have enough for this? It's, you know, enough numbers, this kind of thing. And I think what it boils down to, some people complain about for this is what's the quality of of what we have? And I don't think we really look at that enough. And, you know, maybe there's a way to add that in some fashion to some of the criteria we have and some of the things we look at in this. But I mean, because I mean, if if it really came to it and you were to just kind of throw most of the zoning rules out the window, you could go build a block of flats, you know, of apartments for, you know, and have, you know, 300 square foot per apartment or something like that and just build it up and have it in a box and add 1,000 to it. Just saying, assuming you had, you know, the infrastructure and all this kind of stuff, but but really, who's going to want to live there? You know, the quality of that is, you know, a one. And where, you know, you're, you know, one out of 10 and where people are not looking for that. It's like, well, you know, we've technically satisfied all this kind of thing for the quantity, but it's not working for for what we're doing because we're living in what's essentially a dump. And so there's got to be a way to address the community's desire for actual quality while still meeting or at least coming close to meeting the quantity this involves and is and is dictated by the state. And I think the state's in the same boat as this, as they're demanding quantity, quantity, quantity and not giving the first consideration to the quality of the state of housing and property and and to be able to do that. And that's what actually attracts people to come to some place and invest into it is not the quantity, but the quality. And so I don't know, it's just something I think we should think about how to address it as a commission and as a city for where we're going forward.
Yes, Commissioner, I would share that we know when we went through all of the middle housing updates to our comp plan and our code. So for single family, we look at, we do not have specific design standards for single family homes. We look at building heights, setbacks, lot coverage.
Right.
When we deal with the middle housing for duplexes, it follows that same structure. When we get up into the triplex and the quadplex the townhomes, you may remember that's where we start to get in some some additional standards. Not so really so much for the triplex, you can have attached, you can have detached, quadplex, you can have attached, you can have detached. But there are some elements that come along with those, you know, about windows. When we got to the townhome regulations, there were some design standards that were incorporated into that proposal. Window openings, awnings, articulation, you know, driveway locations and processes and with attached, they detach. And then we have design standards for our cottage clusters. And Mary will get into her second half of the presentation where we're going to be talking about those design standards for multifamily, which are five or more units. So currently we have a set of standards that are discretionary by and large. There are some non-discretionary provisions, but I'll let her, you know, get into that to her presentation. So I think the message is we are recognizing the quality component of that, but it's also some market conditions that are out there. So you may have a developer who says I've identified, you know, a 10 acre parcel and what I want is to build, you know, 2,000 to 2,500 square foot, three or four bedroom, two and a half, three bath homes, double triple car garages on, you know, on that 5,000 square foot lot. That's their particular niche in the marketplace. You may have another developer who's looking at it. And I'll use Crestview Crossing as an example because you had to, many of you looked at that planned unit development. You know, we've got lots there that are down to, you know, a little under 1,500 square feet. There are three story, single car garage homes, three bedrooms, you know, two baths. So they're kind of those skinnier, narrower, it's a different type of design product. We have had more inquiries now because we have adopted the middle housing provisions about duplex, triplex and quadplex, which is a product that really hadn't been built for a very long time. But now we're seeing some particular interest in all of that. We've also had some interest in townhome development. We haven't seen a lot of that over the course of the last 10 years. But again, we have some design standards that were recently adopted. So we are, we're aware of that issue about the quality component of it. But we can't control all of the quality because of those market forces and factors that come into play.
No, don't get me wrong, Doug. I'm not saying this is as a criticism. I'm just kind of thinking out loud. And maybe as a way to just kind of, you know, brainstorm ideas about how you may might go about it. You know, in some fashion to try to bring about more quality standards for for certain things. And maybe not all of it needs it. You know, maybe it doesn't need it for the for the, you know, the the higher density stuff. Maybe you want it on the the lower density stuff, you know, to because, okay, I don't have the density here, but but I am going to even make it a higher standard for the quality in this particular area. I don't know. I'm just you know, trying, trying to think. And you're totally right with with a lot of it's dictated by market conditions too. So there's only so much you can do.
Yeah. And one of the things we've identified through our workforce housing consortium is the fact that we are missing in our marketplace today, given income levels and so forth, we are missing the studio and one bedroom units. And there's, we believe that there is a demand there. And so your your comment earlier, Commissioner, about, you know, having flats and so forth. So what, you know, if you go back to our downtown plan, you know, the goal there was to try to capture an additional 100 units plus in our roughly 100 acre downtown area.
Right.
And we've had some conversations with developers about, you know, those studio and one bedroom units that are use the phrase cost effective given income levels.
Doug, you're not on PC on the area.
I know, Jason, we spent too many years together. But it's it's one where, you know, we have employees who work in in Newburgh. Let's back up. So we have based upon the ACS data that's in our housing needs analysis, we have less than 2,000 people who actually live and work in Newburgh. All right. And so disproportionately, our population gets up every morning and drives away from Newburgh and goes to work someplace else. At the same time, we have an influx of people coming from other communities who come into Newburgh. So based upon the analysis that we've done and conversations is that you know, how how can an individual who works at, let's say, a fast food restaurant? How can they afford a place to live? Given what the market rates are for a two or three bedroom? Because we're not, nobody's producing that product that's that studio or one bedroom that they can afford. And so we're, you know, we're actively trying to have those conversations with developers about who would be willing to provide that type of housing stock? Now, we don't want the the military barracks version, you know, it's 70 feet long, it's 30 feet wide, it's got punch windows in it and
Yeah, barracks, that's that's even better. That's that's exactly what I was trying to describe.
We, you know, I don't believe the community is looking for that. So how can you design a product that meets market needs that the pro forma pencils out for the developer to be able to do that, but provides a unit that different families, individuals or families can afford and attractively look nice at the same time. And so it's a balancing act. So I have, I have take no offense, Jason, by your question at all, because it's stuff that we think about too.
On a daily basis. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And it does tie really nicely into what I'm going to talk about for the next project. Um, but yeah, a lot of it is based on, you know, the market, what is popular now? What are, you know, design features that developers want to to provide for their housing? But we do have, we have some limits on what we can ask people to do for development and some that we we can. So we have to find that right balance there. So, yeah. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is where it kind of ties into what we were just talking about. So the next project that we got a grant for was to do a code audit with our multifamily development and design standards in the in the code that we have. So what this means is it's coming from the state is requiring that any type of housing, we call it needed housing, but that's basically any type of housing must have standards that are clear and objective, meaning typically it's numeric and value. It's something you can easily check off and say, yes, I need that or I don't. And we need to go through our code. We've already done that for a single family. We do that now. We do that for all of our middle housing that we just completed and got adopted through. So all of that's pretty clear. Now we need to go through our multifamily design standards and make sure that we are meeting this clear and objective standard. And so what that'll look like is we'll work with the consultant to kind of tease through our development code and see where we have standards that maybe don't meet that clear and objectives standard. And then we'll need to actually come up with new language to kind of create clear and objective standards. So what it'll usually look like and other communities and other cities do it this way is there's a two path system. So say a developer comes in and they want to build a multifamily, three story building in downtown, they have two pathways they can go about doing that. Clear and objective standards that we, the city, have come up with. These are usually design standards and development standards that they can check off and say, our building meets all of these. Example could be you have a certain percentage of windows facing the street, say like 20% of the front facade of a building must have windows. It must have certain types of materials for kind of like the outside of the building. So we can get pretty specific and how how clear and objective we want to be, as long as it's easy for a developer to say, yes, I need that. No, I don't. That's kind of the point of clear and objective. And then the other path, though, is if they want to go beyond, above and beyond, or go a little bit different than what our clear and objective standards are, is this discretionary path. And that would be a bigger public process pathway that they would go through. It would most likely be a type three process, meaning it would go to Planning Commission. So you all would have to hold a public hearing and the community can comment on how this proposal is meeting the intent of multifamily for the city of Newburgh. And so this project will again go through an audit to make sure we'll see where we're missing these clear objective standards. And then the second part will be actually coming up with these clear objective standards and then coming up with that pathway discretionary pathway. And the Planning Commission will actually be the Citizen Advisory Committee for this project. So you all will be take part in actually coming up with these new clear and objective standards and the discretionary path. So this kind of, like I said, falls really well with your comment and question, Jason. So as we think about what we want multifamily buildings to look like in Newburgh, that's where we're going to be working in this in this process. So we'll have, like I said, anticipated outcomes will be actual new code language that will get adopted to update our multifamily code section. So next slide, please. So this process is is very similar to the housing production strategy and timeline. It's about going to be about a year, year and a half long process. We're just getting started again. So we'll have our, the project kickoff is happening now. Then we'll do that analysis and code audit. That'll be the next step, figuring out where we need to work on adding new language or adjusting the language. And then the third part will be where we actually come up with the new language or adjusted language. And that'll be with you all in Planning Commission. And so likely we'll have a have to have additional meetings on top of your regular Planning Commission meetings. Hopefully we can align them so that they're on the same night, but they may not always align that perfectly. But that's that's our goal is to make sure that they align on the same night. And then hopefully we'll have actual code recommended language that we can bring to you all and then eventually to City Council for adoption, hopefully March of next year. So that's this particular project. Are there any questions on this one? Okay. That was all I had for you all. Yeah, thanks so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mary. I really appreciate it. It was a wonderful presentation, informative. At this time, we'll start the workshop. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners at this time? Having none, can we have items from staff, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you have in your packet this evening your Oregon Government Ethics Commission, your SEI filings. So Sue had sent out information to you. Please pay attention to it. You don't want to get that phone call or email from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission saying you missed your filing on your economic statements because you can get fined. So we don't want any of our commissioners getting fined. So this applies to any decision making body. So the City Council has to do this, Planning Commission and our Historic Preservation Commission, because they they do make decisions on land use. So the instructions and material is in your packet. You have the ability, as it's noted in the information that came out from Sue. You can contact her or you can contact the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. The phone number and the email is in there. So the timeline to do the filings is coming up. There was some information in your packet about some trainings. So there's some webinars that are coming up. And so if you need to register for a webinar to understand how to do it, for those who have not done it before, you can do that as well. So you will continually get to hear some information from us as we move forward. As we move into April, so you got a little bit of time yet, but it'll be a constant reminder to make sure you follow the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's requirements. That's all I have on that topic. The next one is on just past activities. So the City Council, per our intergovernmental agreement with Yamhill County, there was a partition that was proposed up off of Zimri and Bell Road. And that's information that does not come before the Planning Commission. But we did take it to the City Council. The City Council made a recommendation for approval of that and that was sent back to the county. Last Monday night, the Urban Renewal Agency adopted a resolution to refer the Urban Renewal Plan in accompanying report to the taxing districts. And so that information was sent out via email and US mail today. And there's a 45 day window for them to review and make any comments to the City Council. City Council will be holding a public hearing on April 2nd. And then they'll come back at their second meeting, April 18th, and make a final determination on that. And then they'll come back at their second meeting, April eighteenth, uh, and make a final determination on that. Uh, a couple of our planning commissioners went to planning commissioner training. So is there anything you would like to share of what you learned with other commissioners through that training that occurred virtually, uh, online, but it was, uh, structured under the city of McMinnville was the host for that. Connor?
Yeah, uh, I did go. Um, it was a lot of useful information, um, primarily on procedure. There were some stories shared. Um, but yeah, it was, it was very worthwhile and I'm glad I attended. Uh, yeah.
Charles, anything from you?
So, yeah, I attended that training and then I realized, oh, I already know all this because we have had a year of, of this experience. All the training was the procedures. So as I was going through it, I'm like, oh, okay. I guess I know what this is. I guess I could sit here and just kind of absorb what else is coming thrown at me, but most of it was just the same. Uh, procedural things and all the good stories, but definitely, um, it's definitely fun and eye opening.
Well, Charles, I'm going to take that, that's, that your staff has been doing our job by training you month after month after month after month. Uh, the last item I had was just kind of your forward-looking calendar of activities that are coming up. Uh, so always keep in mind, you know, the requirements on quasi judicial public hearings. And so you constantly hear me say, if you happen to be at a local grocery store and somebody comes up and wants to talk to you about a case, uh, just direct them back to the community development department. We will answer the questions. So you don't have those experte contacts, but even if you did, have somebody walk up in a grocery store and start to talk to you, you do need to divulge that at the beginning of a quasi judicial public hearing. Uh, so you've got a couple of those coming up. We have a vacation rental. Uh, we've got an appeal on the design determination for Elliott Road. And then we have a legislative hearing on the urban renewal plan on March tenth as well. So I'm in the process of writing that staff report now in April tentative, uh, and it's probably already going to change. And since I've sent this memo out, I know it has changed. Um, so I'm not sure exactly what's going to be on our April agenda. More than likely, we'll have another conditional use for a vacation rental, but the items related to the urban growth boundary will probably get pushed back. Um, we will be counsel, hopefully we'll initiate two amendments to our development code at their meeting on February twenty-second. The first one is for middle housing land divisions. Uh, that particular provision of that bill, uh, Senate Bill four fifty-eight goes into effect July first. So we're trying to get that package put together and get in front of the planning commission and then the city council at their June sixth meeting. And the other one is a development code amendment to our sign regulations. We have not touched our sign regulations since twenty fifteen. But this will be related to temporary importable signs. Um, and then as we're finalizing the schedule, we've made a few tweaks. And so your memo next month will have the correct dates. Uh, will be the housing production strategy, strategy and making sure we've got the briefing scheduled for the planning commission as Mary uh, provided in you, in her presentation to you. So as always, we will continue to add more things to the, uh, to the agenda. I know right now, uh, I have things scheduled out into April of twenty twenty-three. So we're well over a year ahead. Lots of things will happen between now and and Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you, Doug. Um, are there any items from any of the commissioners?
Yes, uh, Plan Commissioner Obon, I have a question for staff regarding, um, a comment from last month, uh, based on our meeting minutes about the recommendation to city council regarding vacation rentals and, uh, uh, it says that, uh, staff would prepare material for our February meeting for a commission to discuss it further. Is there any information regarding that or at least for the upcoming year to go over some interest, uh, just findings and interesting stats?
Yeah. So, uh, following our, our January meeting, I've had these series of conversations with our interim city manager about vacation rentals, who has been having conversations with the mayor. Um, so as recent as today, I was answering a series of emails about vacation rentals, because we have seen an uptick, uh, over the course of the last year. Mary's working on a vacation rental map with GIS to update one. Mary, what did I do that map three years ago now? Something like that.
Yeah, something like that. So it needs to be updated to show where all of the, at least ones we know about.
Yeah. So I think, uh, Commissioner, the best way to say is we're working on it. We don't have information to bring back to you yet. Uh, part of this is, as I mentioned at the hearings last month, is that the, the city council needs to provide us some direction about what they want to do. We have not received that direction yet, but I am pushing them information up through the channels to see, uh, if the council wants to put that on, uh, as an agenda item at one of their meetings and provide staff direction.
And I, um, I can also, once I have the map done, I can send it to you all as well. Or it'll be, I'm actually updating some of the, um, Newburgh website. So we have more information on vacation rentals. So I can send that information to you all once it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Bobby. Um, can I have after this meeting, uh, Doug and Commissioner Albin, could you please stay behind for a moment? After we convene. Um, if nothing else, adjournment of the meeting of February tenth, twenty twenty is now adjourned.
Thank you.